I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction. Who do we have on?
No one online.
No one online?
Not yet.
Okay, good, because I want to be done by eight o'clock.
I love your goal.
So we can, well, no.
Rock and roll, let's do it.
We're done with these guys, not done with us.
Yeah, we have an executive session.
Yes.
I'd like to be done with it all by eight o'clock if we can swing that.
Alright, okay.
But on that note, we do have a couple of additions, and it's an executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body, which is 1 VSA subsection 313, and an update on the pedestrian scoping study. I thought we could talk about that under unfinished business. And that's it for ads.
Pedestrian scoping study, where do we want to put that?
Maybe unfinished business or ongoing.
Alright, I didn't look down quick enough. Perfect. Approval of the minute.
From October 4th.
Seems fine. I hope that we approve a minute from last meeting.
Rich is on it. Perfect. No pre-requested. Any announcements?
Uh, no. Maybe one announcement is that the town is seeking a full-time road foreman.
Yep.
And interest and cover letters and resumes can be sent to the select board email address.
Okay, super. And zoning administrator, nothing. And Harley and I have been going back and forth a little bit, and he respectfully declined the position. He feels that there's other options that he would like to pursue to benefit the town. And I really appreciate you for the serious consideration that you gave us over this. And I'd like to keep that door open and we could talk more about how you can pull that together for us, which would be a huge asset too. Thank you. Yes, Frank?
You're looking for interim?
We're looking for zoning administrator.
Permanent zoning administrator right now. I think you should stick with the interim and then float to permanent. And then somebody might be interested in interim, just to get things rolling. Because we're talking about the software and all this stuff, so if somebody comes in and they step in, it's easy to just jump into it. So that's the big challenge that Jonas was working on, and it has not been completed to automate it.
Right.
Alright, so that step is really what is the focus, I think, in here.
Planning Commission tomorrow night, or next Monday, right? Okay. Road Foreman. Oh, excuse me, Harley?
When I was looking up all the rules and regulations about zoning administrator, one of the statements came from the Vermont Secretary of State, I believe it was, was that the planning commission typically does the legwork of trying to find a zoning administrator. And I just mentioned that as something I came across. Our town history may be different, so I don't know if any could applause. But I did come across, and you could just shift it over to the planning commission and tell them to go do that.
Well, quite honestly, a few years ago when we found Jonas, we were just scrambling. And he was the first person that took interest, and we pulled him in quick, so.
Is it an either-or in a statute, or is it a hard planning commission in a statute?
It says that the planning commission nominates someone, but the select board is in charge of.
Oh, we're in bed and you know that stuff.
Did it say anything about that default, if there's no zoning administrator?
No, no, this is the perfect world.
Oh, right, sure. The town people want to do it right now.
Instant permit. Applied today. Discount.
I don't know if anybody got any ideas. Stop.
Can you reach out to Devin Neary and see if he has anybody that you can think of?
I can, I can reach out to him, yeah. We can also, we could put a discussion of it on our agenda for next Monday for the planning commission. Just keep the line.
And just, you know, ask everyone there if anyone has any ideas.
And another suggestion would...
Rick Sassa or John might also be interested in something like that.
Yeah.
The other towns that Jonas worked with, there might be some possibility to get somebody who also would want to step into doing or working for the other towns too, so that it could be more of a full-time gig.
Which I know was Castleton. Was there a third town that you worked with?
Polton.
He wasn't a zoning admin in Polton, but he did several, I don't think he worked in Polton. He was the town manager for a very long time, and then he retired and then he worked in recreation at Polton. And then he volunteered a lot in Polton. So I don't know that there's a void in Polton, but Castleton definitely.
Think the town manager in Polton access the zoning administrator? He did when he was in Polton. So that job may carry it all.
I mean, there's a void in Polton, but it's not in their governance.
Okay, so what?
No, I mean that Jonas filled a lot of roles as a volunteer. I went back and I swear for not to say Polton.
From shade, I was like Julie, wow.
Please, sorry.
He was beloved in many areas for his true civil servant passion.
Road Foreman.
What's happening? Just grading some roads, finishing up some roadside mowing, preparing for the paving on Button's Falls Road.
Do we have a date for that, or?
Supposed to be the 24th.
24th, okay. They be able to do it in a day?
I think that's the plan. That's the hope. If they can get enough trucks, so.
Perry would like to know, or would like to confirm where salt is coming from.
And we haven't determined that yet.
So that's something that they would like some guidance and instruction on?
So we can get some pricing on that. I know Keith had mentioned that the last time I talked with him. So I can get with him and...
See where we had prices from last year, and it turns out that it doesn't work to get it through the state because of the structure of the state billing. And they have, when they bid the county or the state coverage area, it's the same price through the whole coverage area. So even though we're way close, we ended up paying a lot more on trucking. And Keith had explained that several times during the course of, and then it was just cheaper to get it from, I think, I don't know if we're getting it from American Rockfall or Ford. Ford and pretty much ends up being the ticket. We can buy it from them at their, you know, county, you know, state municipal level.
Quality was a bit of an issue last year with that.
What's that? Quality?
Quality was a bit of an issue.
Right, it's interesting because last year Chuckie Friedman took it over and Fain ran it up till that point.
Right.
So, I don't know.
I'll get some details on it, and we'll get that figured out.
Okay. Yeah, that's one of the few, the things that we got left. Are we going to be able to try and do something with that in West Polat before?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that as well, just.
You mean the, the road?
By number four?
Yeah, so the plan, they were working on that road, putting culverts in, and the plan was they were going to work their way down there.
Okay.
Saw that out and fix it.
Saw it out, fill it, and then black chop it. Okay, do it, okay. That's so.
Before it gets too cold.
Yeah, yeah. And they also have to fix a spot on New Street as well. Where we put that drain across it from Patsy's, so.
Is there anything else?
And I can follow up with, if I'm going to get a time on that. I know they wanted to hammer the grading out, while the roads were still a little bit damp.
Yeah, but grading is holding up okay?
Yes.
Okay. And that was a question. What do we use for oil?
As far as engine oil?
Yes. Do we just go buy it at Tractor Supply, or, I mean, because I don't, I don't know if the Shell Rotell at Tractor Supplies is the same quality, even though it's Shell Rotell, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that either. We could get a couple of kales and see.
It, it just seemed to click on me that we got two vehicles with turbos bad. You know, are we not, is it something to do with our oil, or do we need to run a better quality oil? Or do we need to evaluate our intervals and stuff like that?
I can look into that.
Okay, that's, that's all I'm looking at. I'm not, I'm just, these are just things that are popping in my head. You know, maybe, maybe we need to deevaluate our intervals, change intervals and stuff like that, or routine maintenance, and adjust if we blew, if we lost two turbochargers on two different machines. I know they got aged, but I don't know that it's enough to really warrant that issue.
And I, I don't know, you know, the details as far as the, on the truck, whether it was an actuator, or it was bearings on the turbo, or exactly what it was. And I can call Pete and find that out as well.
And nowadays you can't just put an actuator on, you got to change the whole turbo, it's stupid.
Yes.
And that truck with that many miles, the actuator would rust and freeze shut, doesn't surprise me. So, yeah, we'll see. Those are just questions that come into my mind, I was thinking about it. Though maybe it exactly is that.
Yeah, and we can, I can find that out.
And Mike, we got a letter too from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission saying that last year Polat submitted a letter of intent requesting $5,600 to purchase a leaf blower. At the time, there were insufficient funds to support all requests, and you received notification of being placed on a waitlist until additional funds could be secured. I'm happy to share that the grant funding is now in place, and Polat has been awarded $5,600 to purchase a leaf blower to help implement best management practices.
Can we sell ours and buy a new one?
Do we have to buy it from?
So it's $5,600 with a 20% local match, which is 1,400. We have to follow all local procurement procedures, and I can look into that and see if...
They don't, they don't give it...
There's any way that we can...
They don't give it to you after the fact, so say, sorry, we bought our own, we had our own money. We bought our own leaf blower, we don't need your money.
See if they can do, if they can retroactive with.
Uh, we, they can't. We've already been down that road.
They won't. We've been down that road so many times.
Is there...
Two is better than one.
Any, well, maybe we can see if there's anything else that might, we can, because I just imagine that it can't hurt to reach back out to them.
Oh, absolutely.
If there's anything else that we might need to say, that it's been a really long time, this is something that we needed, so we went ahead and purchased it, however, we also maybe would like X. And if it's something that could help to contribute to achieving the best management practices, then maybe it would work.
They had kind of a list of stuff a few years ago, it's just still saying you had, you had certain, certain pieces of equipment that you could buy.
Yeah, so I'm, see, I'm thinking that since we have this money, we've been awarded the money. Maybe we can look at the list and see if there's anything else that we might like.
Yeah, maybe they'll allow us to apply that money to something else.
So I'll pull the list up and I'll send it to everybody, and we can, and I won't say anything yet, but maybe we can, maybe we can get something, we'll see.
Do they last a long time, and is that about the purchase price of the leaf blower?
It's an attachment, right, for the tractor?
Attachment? That's about the purchase?
It's got a long lifespan if it's well maintained. Yeah, that's about the price. I mean, this is a huge blower.
Oh, I...
It actually blow all the debris out of the ditches and...
It's a turbine, right? That one's a turbine, it's a buffalo, right?
Yeah, hooks right to the...
It's a buffalo turbine blower there.
Yeah, I saw it the other day when they were, were shopping in the River Mountain Road. And the leaf blower was on back in the truck.
They can go back through and blow the debris out of the road.
Certainly is, is well used, for sure. It makes a great difference when they're, when they're mowing and leaf enraking and fall grading. It's huge, you don't wide up all the leaves in the dirt, for sure. Is there anything else in the, in the road?
Well, they piled up all the shoulder stone over there on Button's Falls Road before the paving project.
Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that works out perfect. Do you have S5 available they could use?
Save us some hauling.
Yeah, all the way around.
Yeah, that's about it for that to pick up.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Okay, assessors, anything from the assessors? Town Clerk's memo.
From Deb, 173 ballots were processed into the tabulator today. There's a citizen service request, which I'll read. And Deb might not be able to attend tonight, and I can message her if there's anything that needs to be addressed. And the service request is from Tammy Lewis. There's a street light out and has been for some time, I think on Route 153. She called Green Mountain Power and was told that there had to be authorization from the town. So I believe that then this request would be to...
Put Bob on it.
Put Bob on it, but I think that we need, I think as a board, the board needs to provide authorization to allow her to move forward with Green Mountain Power, or for us to contact Green Mountain Power?
I guess that's what we have to do.
Okay.
And here he is.
So you're all okay with that?
Any other questions about the town clerk's memo? Okay. Town Treasurer's memo?
Do you want it?
I got it. I have a score on it here. Three warrants this week. Payroll was 11,391.61. Accounts payable 18,177.99. General fund monies 11,157.12. Highway 12,827.14. Wastewater 5,589.34. I did call Consolidated about the repairs on the phone line, or well, internet with the wastewater treatment plant, and they did reverse those repair charges, I think it was like $320, because we do have a maintenance plan on that line.
And why did you charge us in the first place?
Interesting. I found that interesting as well.
Because they wanted to try.
Yeah. And we did contest it, they would get away with it.
So while looking through that bill, I did note that we do have the, we have the plan on that line. We do not have it on the line to the West Polat garage, but they don't have internet, they only have phone. But they, we also do pay $4.07 per month to have an unlisted number at the garage.
Makes no sense.
Right?
Because there's no answering machine, and there hardly anybody there, it's not like they're going to pick it up.
Yeah.
So I would say throw that out, we can, we can list that number, West Polat.
I mean, I know it's only 470, but why spend it?
That's $60.
I...
Almost.
I apologize for my formatting. I didn't, it didn't even occur to me at the time as I was scrambling to print this at the end of my day, that I could just print double-sided, like, right over my tech savvy brain. So I have the collections sort of on top of each other, and I will send them to you guys separately, so it makes more sense. But the top part is the property tax levy of $3,755,451.07, and there's the breakdown of what has been collected and what remains. And right now, what remains is $1,527,111.35. So that would be due in February. Then the wastewater levy, the levy is $113,410, and then the breakdown of collections and what remains is $75,336.90.
And the wastewater levy is broken up into four panels?
Correct.
And this will be, this involves just the first panel?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to take a moment to publicly honor Jonas. He was one of my favorite people to be around here. He was funny and smart and dedicated and... To be honest, there's not anybody left here that can swear on my level, and I'm sad. I truly feel that his commitment to our community came from a general love of the idea of Big C community, and I'm going to miss him a lot.
Absolutely. That's very nice. Thank you. Now we have three warrants.
I hope that we approve those warrants, 23020, 23021, and 23022.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Pitch a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Post carried. So in your absence, we nominated you to get ahold of Green Mountain and ask them to fix the light in front of Tammy Lewis's house, because they won't fix it unless a representative from the town asks them. We could handle that easy.
I might be able to.
Connects in there. Just a little unknapped.
This is sporting a jam from Switcher. Wearing the outfit and everything.
His out, his Bob's outfit. It's perfect for the job.
You're in uniform, ready to climb that board and fix that light.
Flashlights tonight, I'm going to be here. The light, the most, oh man, well. Sorry. Nothing for emergency management director or health officer or wastewater that I'm aware of. Also, nothing that I'm aware of to report for facilities, but we do have an exciting announcement from Meadowwee School Board.
Well, I just want to...
Oops, sorry, I'm just...
I want to backtrack to wastewater, so I contacted John Kirin, the guy who's going to be working on grants for us, and been trying to set up a time, which both of you know, with Mike and Julie and Jill, to do what's called, the initial part of working with him is what's called a self-assessment. He needs to, he said it'll take about 30 to 60 minutes. We can do it online, virtually, or we can do it in person. And he just is going to have some questions about the collections for the wastewater and how we do that, and also some technical stuff about the plant itself. And once, evidently he met with the state on October 12th and talked about our situation here with the state, and they are supportive of us doing something, I guess. He will give us more details, it sounds promising. So you both gave me your availabilities, and I've sent, now I've sent back to him the dates that all of us and Jill are available. So once he gets back to me, I'll let you know what's up.
Super, thank you.
But yeah, that's to move toward applying for grants that have deadlines next spring.
Facilities report, I, Dave Armstrong was in, but he was looking at a job at work, and I didn't get to talk to him to see about this. But I imagine it's something they're going to try and fit in when they get done with their roofing. They got several roofing jobs going on, and a couple good ones at work, so. Think they're going to try to get that when the weather's better. This is something that could be more, more cooler weather, so.
We just have to make sure, I know, like, they're in New York, and they vote on different days, so we just have to make sure that they know when we vote. They can't be, the porch can't be ripped apart.
Right, okay.
What, they don't vote on the second Tuesday in November?
Well, they, maybe, they may. It was the primaries that they, they were fully oblivious to that. And they may, I mean, maybe some of the guys just aren't going to remember. We just can't have our porch, like, even partially ripped apart before an election. It has to either be all the way done, or not done at all.
Okay. Meadowwee School Board.
I just, I, we had our meeting last night, and I haven't had time to write up a report, but I have two things that I wanted to mention. One, we need to notify you that we have fulfilled, we have filled the vacancy. Corey Bravo, it will be, has been appointed. She came in and took her oath today, so she's now a full-fledged member, and will be until March. She picked up her petition to run, so hopefully she'll be able to run and continue beyond March as well. The only other thing I wanted to say, and it pertains less to the Meadowwee School, but across our supervisory union, we're really struggling to find substitute teachers. And it's to such a level that we're considering programmatic changes. Not, we're not considering them now, but it's something that's like, it could very well happen. So anybody that knows anybody that has any availability to sub in some of the schools, like Manchester and Londonderry, and also if you want to sub in Meadowwee, could please let someone at the ERSC know, because it's, it's pretty dire.
Does anyone do it, or do they have a degree in education?
Anyone can do it, you have to pass a criminal background.
Okay.
But high school degree is, a high school diploma is all you need.
Wow. I always thought that about the substitutes, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That's, that's good that you bring that up to us. I think that's important. Alright. Older unfinished DeVoret grant.
DeVoret grant, well, there's no updates on it. I, I let them know that we want to go ahead with it, and they have not sent us the grant yet. So when it comes, we can sign it.
Okay. And the pedestrian scoping study?
Alright, we have, so two things about the pedestrian scoping study. The, Kristen, what's the, what's the, actually, the meeting that we're doing?
So...
It's a public meeting.
So it's that next, um...
It's the next select board meeting we're going to have. I think this is the final public meeting. For that is going to be during a public comment. I guess it's going to be during the time.
Or whenever you'd like to have it, at whichever point in the meeting, but Nicole and Devin Neary are going to be attending. She might...
Devin will be here?
I think Devin will be here, Nicole will be virtual. And the message read that they're going to do a final presentation on the pedestrian scoping study at the November, or pedestrian study, at the November 1st select board meeting. It's just a general wrap-up of the project, so Devin Neary from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is going to come in person, and I will be able to log in virtually.
Oh, this is the next select board meeting? Is it going to affect you that it has to be upstairs, because that's the day of the election?
No, presentations are so fun upstairs, so.
Okay.
Why not?
It's what it is.
It is what it is. I mean, I don't think it's a big deal.
What we'll do is, I think it makes sense to put them in the pre-requested.
So they can go first.
So that Devin and them can, he doesn't have to hang around through the whole meeting, and we can get that out of the way.
The, two weeks from now is the 1st of November.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay, never mind. You're down here.
Okay, wherever we will be, we will be, and that will work out this time.
And it's, it's been properly worn and everything as a public view, so. The other thing about that grant is that we need to, they sent me, this is, to the agreement between Town of Polat and Fossil Neil, because they're not going to be done by September 28th, we have to sign an extension with them of the contract agreement, but no change in fees. Just that they'll get it done by December 31st. So we need somebody who, if you want to sign that.
For them.
And I can just get that scanned and sent back to them. The point people from Polat for that project were myself, Jonas, and John. And so I just, last time they emailed me, and I just liked to know what was going on and why I was now their only point person for Polat. I told them to keep John in the loop, but not to distract us. We need to write back. I told them to keep John in the loop, couldn't have distracted, and they're right back to them, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Any new business? Any public comment? Harley?
Uh, the Green Mountain Power line that goes up Hickory Hollow Road, and then cuts, cuts across country to Rupert, there's been several power outages over the past couple of years, and the Green Mountain Power calls the line a problem, cause it crosses, cuts across country, and the woods that it goes through, bunch of old trees, and it goes out a lot. Green Mountain Power claims they have a program to bury power lines, and they suggest burying the line up to Rupert through the, under the Rupert Mountain Road. Rupert Politt Mountain Road. Uh, so, we met, uh, myself and a neighbor, met with this Green Mountain Power representative out of Pulteney, uh, and she mentioned this program, and the long history of this line, and it was supposed to run up the Rupert Mountain Road, but nobody wants the line to interfere with their views, and apparently a very long history. But, they possibly could bury it under the road, they have a program. My question to the select board is, do we know of any showstoppers for putting power lines under the road? If not, I would find out what the, the kinds of things that need to happen that would put this into consideration for their bury the power line under the, underground program.
The only thing I know is we've done some buried telephone lines.
Oh, uh, Vita is all buried.
It's all buried up too there too, I remember over there.
Yeah.
And here at Brook Road, and, and we allowed that, so. I would think, you know, I can't really see any problem, can you?
No, I, there's a lot of engineering involved with the culverts and all that.
That's the, uh, high power line too, I mean, that's not.
That's not, that's not, that's not a leaf cord.
Right.
That's the real deal.
It's not what?
It's not coming off of the transformer, so it's the full voltage. It's extremely dangerous, I, I, you know, I don't know all the details, I just know that's, that's the hot stuff.
Uh, yes, cause I look at the, I mean, the wire is thin, so it must be really high voltage, yeah. So, if there's no like, oh no, we did that thirty years ago here in Politt, and it was a disaster, or something like that, then I would find out from Green Mountain Power what the details are, and bring it back to the select board.
I'd have to say that we're willing to listen more about their proposal, if, you know, if they wanted to look into it and talk to us about it, and we could see if, if, you know, from our perspective, if there was any red flags, but it's certainly nothing that I know of, to just say, no, we don't want it. At this point, you guys feel the same way, we can, we're open to the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Frank?
How's John doing?
Um, he's, Julie had an update.
We have facility, and should be home in a couple of weeks.
I think that, just like board should gather up and do a card, send a card, or some, some, something to them.
Yeah, I feel that we should send a card to Gemma Rose and Paul as well. I meant to bring cards in tonight, and I just couldn't get them, I will bring them for next week.
Crossed my mind, and then I totally forgot to.
Yeah, same thing.
Is that something that you'll work on for us? Thank you very much. So, Merrill said she, she'd cook on eight, and I would text her if I brought my phone with me.
I might have her number.
Would you like me to text her that you're ready?
What's that?
Would you like me to just text her, or give you her number?
Yes, you could just, I, I don't have my phone, so just text her and say that we're available for her if she's ready.
All of her's Julie, um.
Yeah, cool, she'll be happy. She said she'd sign on at eight, I told her I'd try and have the meeting ready, and over by eight.
Nice work.
So, oh, he can't, he can't talk to us till he shuts them all off, but this is pretty cool, be interesting to see how, how this performs.
What about the screen?
So this is the Peg TV, so I'm still waiting, reached, reached out to B and H. Uh, to, cause we need to get some new pieces of equipment to make everything work, our screen, um, but.
And in about two minutes.
The Peg TV setup, so this is the setup, which we can, you guys can get a demonstration of later after the meeting if you'd like it, but there's the three cameras, which if the board decides they wanna do this, could be mounted more permanently in places that make sense. Um, and the system is pretty cool, there's all different opportunities to get some really fun angles. And, uh, uh, there's, I don't know what else I'm forgetting, but it's pretty cool, and maybe we'd like it. Uh, if the board decides that they would like to have it, we just have to let Peg TV know. There's no cost to the town, as far as we're aware at this point, and there's no liability for if anything crazy happens to the, to the equipment. And I believe that the, the cameras and things like that would live here, and they would be mounted here, but the mothership, um, would come weekly, or bi-weekly. And there's something that's neat about it, is that, that you could take a cord from that system, and plug it right into the whatever is running Zoom, and so if, like, for example, next time they're doing a presentation and it's through Zoom, or somebody's talking through Zoom, I think the idea is that the camera would be able to pick that up, so for the people viewing at pegtv.com or live, uh, could see what's happening on the, on the web, so. It's pretty cool.
Did we figure out what we need for that one, or?
So, okay, so what's happening with all of that is that we bought that stand, because the idea was, once upon a time, that this, we would have a stand, and so we could like wheel it out, like the days when you had a substitute teacher at school. Um, but if, and there was, it was the wrong size mounting plaque, and I reached out to do an exchange, and there was some holiday that B and H recognizes that they take like ten days off for. Um, so I'm awaiting them to come back from their vacation. So, the other thing though is, if you would rather have it mounted to the wall, we could look into that, um, because I'll have to be doing some returning and exchanging anyway, so we could return the stand. If you'd rather have a TV mounted to the wall, I think that originally we hadn't wanted to do that, because, you know. I don't know, I don't remember why, but.
Well, obviously, we have to meet upstairs, so.
Well, and I think, didn't you consider if you could take it to West Politt for the annual meeting? Or were you not interested in considering that? Cause we, the annual meeting, when it is held in person, is usually at the school.
Yeah, so I think that it was, the port of, portability of it was appealing, but the TV is giant. It's very big, um, it's gonna be, that's quite a bit to transport. For me, I mean, somebody else might be able to do it more gracefully than I could, but. Yeah, and like a lot of packing materials, and, like, we would have to save the box with all the foam and everything. But anyway, so that's what's happening with that, and it's like pretty par for the course for me. It's not going so well.
Well, thank you for your continued process.
I'm working on it, I think about it in the box, so.
I, on occasion, happen to be friends with some people working at Telescope, and the machine shop there is unbelievable. You can build anything there, so any adapter to make this possible would be something that, if not available, I think that, that if Telescope were interested, that would be easy for them to figure out and do. No, I know, I know what you got in the machine shop, it's unbelievable.
And I see that our, um, air filter units also came in, they're sitting in boxes.
Oh, that's sitting in the box over there, oh, super.
Yeah, Julie ordered them, we got them.
So, Merrill's here.
Merrill's here, okay, we wanna make a motion?
Sure, I hope that we enter executive session for the purpose that's listed here. There we go.
We'll have a second. We'll second it, all in favor?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, hey.